Okay, everybody, welcome. It is six o'clock on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. I hereby call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Ms. Joni, could you please do the roll call?
Chairperson Rick.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Applegate.
Here.
Commissioner Hacket Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Rainville.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Apodaca.
Here.
I have seven members present.
Okay, before we move on to public to be heard, does someone, we have nine members of the public in attendance, would someone care to explain how to speak during the meeting? Raise your hand, all that stuff.
So on the screen, you see the interface for how to use the GoTo webinar. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see the options for audio. You can have either accessing audio through your computer, through your phone, or no audio at all, which means that you will not be able to speak or interact with any of the members of staff or commission. If you do call in, you'll have either an 800 number to call in, in addition to an access code and an audio panel. If you only see the four buttons, please click the orange button on the top to expand your interface. Currently, all attendees' microphones are muted. There are two ways to communicate with the commission. The first would be to raise your hand by clicking the hand button in your vertical menu bar, or to type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. To click on the hand button, it would be the third button down. To raise your hand, a green arrow will appear on the hand, indicating your hand is raised. When you are done answering your question, or a staff has completed response, a response to your question, please lower it, and it will turn, the arrow will turn from green to red. Your other option would be to type a question into the question pane, at which time staff or a commission member will read that into the record. Staff may or may not be able to answer that question during the meeting and may need to follow up with you. A response will also be provided either verbally or typed into the question panel.
We have nine members of the public here as attendees. Does any of the members of the public have an item that they wish to address with the Planning Commission that is not on our agenda? If you're wanting to address something on the agenda, we'll do it at that time, but something not on the agenda, please raise your hand or enter a question. Okay, seeing no hands raised and not seeing any questions in the question, we'll move on with the agenda. Approval of minutes. Consider the January 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Would someone like to make a correction or move to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Rainville. I make a motion that we approve the January 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Rainville. Who would like to second it?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Joni, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, second.
Who was the person that seconded?
That was me, Commissioner Applegate.
Commissioner Applegate.
Commissioner Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacket Larson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Apodaca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, we have no old business, so we will move on to new business. Item 7A. I am opening a public hearing on a request from Kim Lee Horn on behalf of Thompson Thrift Development Incorporated, DBA, as Watermark, for a request to rezone from Regional Commercial District to Multi-Family District for property generally located on the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Metropolitan Road. Ms. Martinez.
Hello, everyone. This is actually Melanie Estrada. I'll be presenting this staff report to you guys at this time. The request to rezone from the Regional Commercial to the Multi-Family District. This is a request to rezone the property from the Regional Commercial District to the Multi-Family District. The property is generally located at the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and future southern extension of Metropolitan Road. It consists of two vacant unplatted lots. A multi-family residential development is proposed, which is necessating the request. The city has identified this area as an infill area for development. And here is the vicinity map where the property is located. The surrounding land uses of the property are to the north, we have vacant land and Mesa Ridge High School, which is zone multi-family and parks and open space. To the south, we have vacant land, which is zone planned unit development. To the east, we have commercial development, which is zone planned unit development. And to the west, we have vacant land, zoned Regional Commercial District. The future land use plan recommends multi-family residential for this property. The rezoning request is generally consistent with the future land use plan. Staff finds that the rezone request is consistent with the criteria set forth in Section 17.24.050 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the property from Regional Commercial to the Multi-Family District. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for any questions you guys might have for staff.
Okay, who would like to ask staff questions?
This is Commissioner Rainville. I had a question about the amount of acreage. On one section, it says that it's 17.4 acres roughly, but then on like the, from the land owner, it was saying that it's like 22 acres. Does, I mean, I don't think it matters.
So there was actually originally a discrepancy. It's been corrected. The correct acreage is 17.4 approximately acres.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rainville. Anyone else with any other questions? Okay, hearing none, is the applicant present and do they wish to address the Planning Commission?
We are. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you, Ms. Tutt.
Great, thank you. I'm Jessica Tuttle. I'm with Thompson Thrift. We are the multi-family developer. Thanks so much, Melanie, for going through our application. I'll be brief. There's a short PowerPoint presentation. I know it's right before dinner, so I'm not going to take too long, but welcome any questions once I run through this. The project we're proposing is the Garrison by Watermark. It's 336 units. Oh, I don't know how to click through here. One second. Okay.
Jessica, if you just want to say next slide, I can click through them.
Thank you so much. So the easiest way to show you who Watermark is and who Thompson Thrift is, is to show you previous projects that we've built. So this is an example of our three-story garden-style project. What we'll be building on this site is similar, although now we do enclosed corridors. So before, where we had open stairs, now you have a door, it's secured, and you have conditioned space into your unit. So it's a nicer, nicer look. Keep clicking, Kristy. Interiors, large open floor plans. By the time we design, go through entitlements, build the project, we're five years out from when we designed this unit. So really excited about what we're doing today, but it'll be an upgrade of quartz instead of granite that's shown here, still stainless steel appliances and the large units. Next slide. Another picture of the kitchen. Next slide. Open floor plan, next slide. Just trying to show quick examples of what we build. Here's our model unit. This is in Longmont. We still own and operate Longmont, Parker. We have a project that we're under construction in Colorado Springs, and we have in-house property management. We used to have a third-party property manager. They just weren't really managing up to our quality standards. So it's exciting to be having property management in-house for these units. Keep clicking through. Bathrooms, framed mirrors, in-unit laundry, washer and dryer. Next slide. And then amenity spaces. We really take a lot of time working on open space and amenity space and green space throughout the site. We'll have a couple of fire pits, string lights, resort-style cabanas around the pool, a couple different grill areas, really make nice amenity space for residents on the property. Next slide. Clubhouse picture, keep clicking. Pool, another picture, keep clicking. Clubhouse interior. This is Longmont again, keep clicking. And then we always do a pavilion at most of our properties, and then a fitness center will also be included with 24-hour access. Next slide. Cheesy slide, but these are our owners, John and Paul. They started the company, we started out of a construction company in '08 when retail wasn't doing so well. They decided to become a multi-family developer. And so since 2010, our first project, we've done 40 projects as of last year, which was really exciting for us. We really learned a lot and gained some experience throughout those projects. Next slide. Here's the 40 projects I just brought up. We have Denver, we have a few in Denver, a few in Parker, Longmont, Aurora. We're going through entitlements in Fort Collins, and then we're excited to be here in Fountain. It's a great site. Keep clicking. Portfolio, you can click through this, Kristy. It's just to show the projects that we've developed over the years. Keep clicking. Next slide. Next slide. Sorry, it's awkward with someone else clicking. Okay, fundamental site criteria. This was to show you quickly, over the 40 projects, we've learned what makes a successful project. And here, it's close proximity to high-traffic thoroughfares. You have the perfect example here in Fountain, next to Mesa Ridge Parkway. Close proximity to jobs, Fort Carson is a big pull for this area, and then the corridor here to our west. Close proximity to high-end housing and good schools, we meet that here in Fountain. And then high-end retail, we have great retail right to our east, which is a great amenity for our residents, and then future retail to our west. And then barriers to entry, Fountain is unique. We typically, the project in Colorado Springs has a ton of units under construction right now. Fountain really only has Mesa Ridge Apartments, the one comp here. So there's a lack of supply, and that, that one comp is fully occupied. So it shows built-up demand. Typically, occupancy will waver through the year. Mesa Ridge Apartments is fully occupied when you call throughout the year. Next slide. Keep going. Okay, so here's a rendering from our architect of the architecture we're proposing. Here's where you can see the enclosed corridors now with the door. It's, it's a modern, updated, monochromatic look is what we're going for with the white, the wood accents, and the dark gray. Next slide. Clubhouse. We're really excited. This is a newly designed clubhouse. In the back are some covered patios, and it's sort of a Chip and Joanna Gaines type of feel, if you're familiar with HGTV. And our site plan. So here you can see, we are proposing access from the east, from Fountain Mesa Road. Currently, we have an access point up at Mesa Ridge Parkway, which we are working through with CDOT. And then 336 units on the 17 acres. Parking detached garages will be part of the plan detention. And then, over the last two months, we've worked with Fountain and different utilities to set up services for not only the multi-family site, but to design and plan for future development to our west. So we will have some off-site water and sanitary sewer extensions all the way down Mesa Road to Syracuse, as well as power to Syracuse and stormwater that we're designing with our engineers. So with me tonight is Monica Unger. She's our Development Manager. Michael Montgomery is our Development Associate and did a lot of the market research. And then our team of engineers, if you have any, any questions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions on the zoning request? Keep in mind that we will still have another discussion after this on the development itself, but any question on the zoning request?
This is Commissioner Rainville.
Go ahead.
So I have a question. It's very a nice-looking project, impressive. And is this going to be owner-occupied buildings or rented-occupied? And my second question is, is this going to be a gated community?
Great questions, yes. These are for rent, Class A multi-family apartments. Sorry, I didn't make that clear. And then, they're market-rate apartments. And then the gated question, yes, we do plan to gate, if not both, at least the eastern access, but we're working with staff. We know we want gates so that traffic isn't cutting through and trying to get to Mesa Ridge. So we definitely are planning that gate on the east side. We'll likely put a gate on the west side as well to make sure we keep traffic out of our, our project.
Thank you.
Okay, any other Commission members have questions on the zoning request?
This is Commissioner Hacket Larson. Just a follow-up, when you say market, are you talking about fair market rent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions?
Commissioner Rainville, one more time. What are the, the units? Are they going to be two-bedroom, three-bedroom, a mixture of different types of occupancies?
It will be. We're currently planning, out of the 336 units, we have 39% one-beds, 50% two-beds, and 11% three-beds.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
So I'm just curious. So the site plan that was submitted shows obviously the, the apartment development, but the develop, the area that you guys also own to the south is, would the rezone and company all that so that there's a potential for an expansion of this apartment complex to the south? Or is it strictly the, the area encompassed as shown on your site plan here?
It is strictly the area for the multi-family projects, so that 17 acres. So yeah, that's a little misleading. What's in white, not all of that's rezoned. It's only where the buildings are at with the boundary around the multi-family site that will be rezoned to multi-family.
So the remainder remains village commercial, presumably?
Correct.
Is that what it is? Okay, thank you.
I think, is that right, Kristy? I don't know the existing zoning, but I know we're not changing it.
That would be correct. The 17 acres is just for the multi-family. The remaining portion will remain the regional commercial.
Anyone else with any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Tuttle. I appreciate you and your, your crew coming in and answering questions. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And what would the commission like to do?
This is Commissioner LeBlanc.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I would actually like to make a motion to approve the rezone. Let me see if I get this right. On the rezone of the property, generally located at the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Metropolitan Road, from Regional Commercial to, Regional Commercial District to the Multi-Family District.
Okay, we have a motion. Would someone care to second it?
This is Commissioner Rainville. I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the request to rezone. Ms. Joni, would you please call the vote?
Chairperson Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacket Larson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainville, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Apodaca, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have six yes, one no. Commissioner Johnson voting no. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for voting your conscience. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to stand up and vote for how you, what you believe in. So thank you. Okay, next, on our agenda, item 7B, a discussion and recommendation on a request from Kimberly Horn on behalf of Thompson Thrift Development Incorporated, doing business as Watermark, for a concept plan known as the Garrison by Watermark Apartments, generally located at the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Metropolitan Road. I assume this is going to be Ms. Melanie again.
Yes, this is Melanie again, to present the concept plan.
Excellent.
So this is a request for consideration of a concept plan for the Garrison by Watermark Apartments. And as we just covered, this is approximately 17.4 acres, and it's located generally at the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Metropolitan Road, and the property is not platted. The concept plan is non-binding and is used to solicit recommendations and feedback to assist with preparing the subdivision documents and site development plan, and no official take, action is taken. So again, here's a vicinity map of the area. As she mentioned in her, in her section, the plan proposes a multi-family residential community with nine three-story garden-style walk-up buildings. The proposed community will offer various amenities, including a pool, clubhouse, grill stations, and a dog park, and additional amenities may be provided as the project continues the refinement of plans. Engineering staff is working with the applicant on the proposed access to this development. A gated access on the eastern boundary to this community may be necessary to avoid possible concerns with vehicle stacking. Turnaround options such as a cul-de-sac or hammerhead turnaround will also be required, and a six-foot-high opaque fence along Mesa Ridge Parkway will be required. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a concept plan only, and I now open it up for discussion.
Okay, any member of the Commission have any questions for Melanie before we move on to the applicant? Commissioner Johnson.
Well, if you're going to ask the applicant, I can, I can wait. Discuss after, never mind.
Okay. Any other member of the Commission have questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Hacket Larson, and I, I don't know if this is an appropriate question for staff or not, so just appreciate your patience with the learning part. But I didn't ask this in the prior because I thought another conversation might come. So I just want to kind of talk about, at least quickly ask, I'm concerned about the traffic, particularly around Mesa Ridge. This was true for the previous project, but I didn't bring that forward, so I don't know if I should bring that forward now. And then, so if there's plans around just traffic around Mesa Ridge with that access, and then is there going to be the, is the through road going to be done to Duckwood to help potentially alleviate traffic? And then the only other question I have is, there just doesn't seem to be enough amenities, like a grocery storage for the amount of growth. So if these aren't appropriate questions for now, I understand, and that could be tabled. I just didn't know, and I should appropriately ask them, so appreciate your patience.
You're fine. This, this is the appropriate time to ask those questions, in my opinion. Typically, in this type of scenario, we're doing zoning, so we're not asking those questions during the zoning portion we're asking during this discussion period. So I appreciate your questions. Melanie, can you help her out on any of these questions?
Sure. So as I mentioned, engineering staff is working with the applicant on the proposed access to this development. I'm not sure where they're at in their discussions of this, but that certainly, they're certainly taking that into consideration as they're developing this. As far as connecting to Duckwood, I'm going to defer to Kristy for that. Maybe she knows where they're at in that process.
Sure, let me go back to a couple of slides to pull up from that. So their general access right now is proposed to Highway 16. And again, we're still working with CDOT as Highway 16 is a CDOT-controlled roadway to extend Metropolitan to the south. A secondary access point would be connecting to Nearon Avenue, which is a platted public roadway that's between Walgreens and Advanced Auto. There is a possibility for the future connection of Metropolitan to Mesa Road to the south, which again, is still in those conversations. For the larger scheme of traffic flow in this area, there is the signal at Highway 16 in Syracuse with the commercial development in that area. But at this time, the roadway is not planned to extend to Duckwood. The development is kind of off on the lower end of the vicinity map, would have connectivity to Duckwood. They're currently in very, very preliminary conversations with the city about reactivating that project, but connectivity in that area would ultimately come through public right-of-way that was deeded to the city in the past. You can kind of see in this area where that roadway is. But there is a larger traffic flow conversation that's taking place in this vicinity.
Okay.
I guess to also answer the question about the number of grocery stores and other retail and commercial establishments that can be provided to help support future residents of this development. There is still the regional commercial area to the west of this development and to the south that is slated for commercial development. As you recall, there was some recent approvals of the commercial development right at that intersection of Highway 16 and Syracuse for some, some amenities there. But in terms of attracting certain types of retailers, we we do work closely with our economic development director to um, facilitate those conversations with uh, national retailers to start looking into um, our city. But unfortunately, staff uh, doesn't have the ability to pick and choose what types of uh, retailers come into our community. Um, we really just kind of do our best to try to attract them, to show that their business plan and their models will work within our community. Um, but we really, it's kind of outside of our control in terms of the number of grocery stores that um, are currently located or may potentially come into our community.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your assistance.
And thank you for your questions, Commissioner. Uh, any other commissioners with any other questions?
This is Commissioner LeBlanc. I have a simple question. If, if I missed it, I apologize. On the north side, Highway sixteen, um, is that, I'm assuming that's going to be a lighted intersection, or will it just be turn lanes in and out?
The access is still being discussed and reviewed with CDOT. CDOT has um, control over the intersection spacing, whether or not there's a signal there or not, and any improvements that are associated with Highway sixteen. So those conversations are still ongoing and haven't been finalized at this time.
Very cool. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any other questions? Okay, Melanie, I have a question, and I apologize for putting you on the spot here. What do our zoning regulations say about the amount of open space required for multifamily housing? I know that we have in our zoning ordinance for planned unit development, we've specified a certain amount uh, must be set aside for uh, open space or uh, contributions in lieu of open space must be made. Uh, what are our requirements for open space for multifamily housing?
This is Christie. Within the multifamily zone district, there is a minimum open space of two hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit. Typically, the multifamily um, developments that we see within our community provide much more than that in terms of their amenities and the clubhouse and other, you know, potential amenities that they could put in to support um, and enhance the living life of their residents.
Okay, thank you very much. So when you say per resident, that would be per apartment in this case?
It's per dwelling unit. So if they, they have, I think she said three hundred and thirty-six dwelling units, it would be the two hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit.
Okay.
Not per resident.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other uh, questions for staff before we move on to the developer?
I, this is Commissioner Johnson. I guess I just have one quick question. So um, I, I've looked into this before, and I don't think I've ever gotten a satisfactory answer, but the driveway on the north side of Mesa Ridge Parkway that goes up towards the, past the softball field and towards the tennis courts at Mesa Ridge, everybody's calling that Metropolitan. It doesn't connect with Metropolitan to the north. Is that street actually platted as Metropolitan? And if not, wouldn't this, the access road coming to the south off of Mesa Ridge Parkway need a different name unless there's some sort of plan in the immediate future to connect to Metropolitan to the north?
I believe the county uh, is the one that, or the, excuse me, I believe it's the Pike's Peak Regional Building Authority. Could be county. I don't remember. Uh, is the one assigning names. I don't believe this, we as the city assign names.
No, that, that's true. That's true, but I'm just saying that if, if that's the, then on the north side, if it's not Metropolitan, we shouldn't call the, the access road for this development Metropolitan because it doesn't actually connect to Metropolitan further up. You know, the nine-one-one does not like to have disjointed sections of street that don't connect.
Okay, that, I understand. Uh, Ms. Christie or Ms. Melanie, do you have uh, an answer on this?
The connectivity is still being reviewed. Um, there's been discussions with El Paso County and CDOT and Fountain in terms of connecting Metropolitan to the north up through that area, and then also connecting it to the south through the development south, connecting to um, Mesa Road. So that's kind of the ultimate plan, big-picture-wise. Um, therefore, that's why it's being referred to as Metropolitan.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm just thinking in terms of uh, emergency response, public safety, you know, if you had, I don't want emergency responders to be directed to the wrong location, is all.
Okay, thank you. Any other commission members? If not, thank you very much, Melanie, Ms. Christie, Ms. Tuttle. Uh, do you have anything you'd like to discuss with us before we ask you questions?
Thank you, Christine and Melanie. Um, I went through the presentation. I won't bore you with that again. Appreciate the comments from commissioners. Um, maybe just to start a couple things, uh, the open space requirement, we can meet that on-site, and I think we almost doubled that, that amount. We have about one point eight acres in the southwest corner that's open space. Um, and we're looking at moving some buildings around to create a really nice courtyard area that looks out to the west towards the beautiful view I know you're aware of. Um, so I think we can meet that comment, and then the access, we're still working through with CDOT, um, as Melanie and Christie uh, commented. We are still um, multifamily is still very viable here. If for some reason it was determined it's not safe on Mesa Ridge and there's too much traffic up at the north, we would still continue a road to the south to Mesa Road and have our main entrance off of the east end of the site uh, from Fountain Mesa. So we will work through those details with the site plan uh, some middle. Unfortunately, we're not there yet at this concept plan level. And then the, the retail comment, we would also love another grocer. Great comment. Um, and I think just the one note there, our sister company is a retail company, Thompson Thrift Retail. The first thing that they look at is the number of rooftops in the market. So they're looking at the amount of people uh, that then would, that's how they start determining if it's a good spot to put a grocer. So um, I think this high density would help bring amenities and additional commercial uses uh, similar to the comments in our staff report from the Economic Development Commission. So thanks for the comments. Any, any questions, I'm sure we can help answer.
Okay. Um, Christie, do you have the uh, site plan? It says the Garrison by Watermark Site Plan Exhibit. Do you have that that you can put up on the screen for everybody?
Give me just a moment. Let me go back a few slides.
Okay. Actually, this one will work.
So I have this one that was part of the.
Yeah, this one will work. Uh, so I have some concerns. Was a parent, uh, currently grandparent. What I'm noticing is most, well, first off, what it looks to be on the south side or the left part of the picture is where uh, the amenities are going to be located. Um, I assume that that's gonna be where the pool, the clubhouse uh, and all that is going to be located, very near the entrance. And then just to the right uh, and down below uh, which would be on the south side of the development, looks like a big part, a big, a big spot of open space. As a parent uh, and a grandparent, what I would tell you is I would rather see the open space somewhere more centrally located. You know, for example, the people up on the north and the east part uh, of the apartments are going to essentially have to go all the way across the complex to get to the pool, the clubhouse, uh, the open space, et cetera. And it, for me, as a parent, it's better if it's more centrally located in the center of development. Uh, it makes it easier for the, the residents to get to. Uh, it provides more security because uh, the kids aren't near uh, roads or the the boundaries of the property where they can easily be snatched up and taken away. And it makes those uh, units that may be further away from where the amenities are currently located uh, more sellable, more rentable, uh, if the, the amenities and the clubhouse and the open space are more centrally located. Uh, that's not really a question. It's more of a comment, uh, but I would ask you to take that into account.
Great comment, uh, and we will definitely take it into account. I actually have a plan from our engineer as of today looking at that very option to incorporate the open space more into two different large courtyards that then have great views to the west. So um, I don't know, can I share my screen? I could show you. It's the same zoning boundary, basically, just takes our clubhouse, moves it to the east, and then moves the buildings around to put the green space inside of the buildings instead of on the corners. Um, so we'll def- comment and get a good plan together for the site plan review with staff.
Okay.
Oh, I could show my screen. Let me see. It's given me the option.
Provide you with the presentation if you wanted to take control of that.
Great. Let me see. Can you see my screen right now or not?
I see. If you're moving your mouse, I see it.
Ah, hold on, let's see. Is this better?
Ah.
So this is our latest layout. We're still going, you know, into the engineering details. Let me see if I can zoom in. Um, but where we had that triangle of, of open space down here at the corner, now we really need this area up at the top for grading. There's a significant amount of topo. So we will grade down to the site, the north end will have a, a six-foot masonry wall required by code all along the north, and then we're creating these pockets of amenity space uh, between the buildings. We'll likely move these buildings a little bit further south, open up this courtyard, and really get some nice views to the west, which is the bottom of the page.
Okay. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Hacket Larson as the only lady on the panel. Uh, would this address your concerns if you were a mother and had kids in this complex?
Well, I think the father should also weigh in, so I don't think this should be a gendering, but uh, I, you know, I, I think there, it was a good point to bring forward, and I mean, I do think taking safety and into consideration would be helpful, but, you know.
Uh, the other uh, items separate from site design, and we'll continue to refine this and add. These, these come up so flat. Once the landscape architect puts the amenity space, designs all of the hardscape and the pocket parks, it really comes to life. Um, but the, the other piece of this, we have three, well, with this unit count, we'll have four full-time property management staff on-site. And then we offer a discounted rate for local police officers if anyone would like to um, rent a unit. Um, and so that helps with security. Uh, the discounted rate, we, we ask that they park, park their car uh, in a visible spot and walk the site uh, at, at certain intervals. So it helps a lot uh, with the safety of our properties and, and then with the gates on each access point, it will also really uh, make sure we're, we're a secure site.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response to that. Uh, are there any other commissioners uh, that have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Tuttle. I appreciate you listening to our concerns and taking time to uh, uh, brief us on your plan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on our agenda, I'm opening a public hearing to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five adopting the City of Fountain Three Mile Plan for twenty twenty-one. Uh, I'm assuming you've got this, Ms. Christie, or is this still Ms. Melanie?
Nope, this would be my, uh, good evening, Commissioner. This is Christie Martinez of the City of Fountain Planning Department. The item being considered tonight is the Three Mile Plan for uh, twenty twenty-one. Per uh, Colorado Revised Statute thirty-one twelve one oh five, all municipalities are required to have a three-mile uh, boundary and map in place prior to uh, any annexations taking place. And these maps must be updated annually. Uh, the Three Mile Plan is based upon the municipal boundaries of Fountain. Um, as you recall, in the third and fourth quarter of twenty twenty, we did process an annexation for the City of Fountain Substation, which was generally near Link and uh, Mark Shuffle. Uh, so as a result of that annexation, we did have to update our plans this year. The public notice was published within the local newspaper, um, advertising the public hearing. This is the figure one, that it will be updated within the Comprehensive Development Plan to reflect the new annexation. It's kind of hard to see, but it's right there where my pointer is at. So the blue line in the uh, is the three-mile radius around the existing city limits. If you look to the west, we do not include Fort Carson, as those are federal lands, and local municipalities do not have jurisdiction in that area. Same thing with the annexation plan. It does identify the, the newly annexed area. It's a little harder to see because we have parcels and then the three-mile boundaries surrounding that as well. Staff finds that the city had previously adopted a comprehensive development plan pursuant to the state statutes, and that the Three Mile Plan depicted in both the Comprehensive Development Plan and the Annexation Plan does comply with the requirements of the statute, and would recommend approval of Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five tonight, uh, adopting the City of Fountain Three Mile Plan for two thousand twenty-one. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that has questions for uh, staff regarding this proposal? Okay, seeing no members of the public raising their hands or entering any questions into the question pane. Uh, what would the commission like to do with this? First, let me close the public hearing. The uh, commission like to do with this request?
This is Commissioner Rainville. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-one hyphen zero zero five adopting the City of Fountain Three Mile Plan for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Would someone care to make a second?
This is Hacket Larson. I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Hacket Larson, seconds. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Joni, would you please call the vote?
President Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacket Larson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainville, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Apadaka, how do you vote?
Yes.
It's seven yes. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Finally, item 7D, appoint a chairperson and vice chairperson for 2021. I will state the same thing that I stated last year. If there is someone on the commission who would like to chair these meetings, I would be more than happy to step aside. If no one wants to do it, I am more than happy to continue on. I serve at the pleasure of this commission. So if someone would like to recommend someone or recommend themselves for the chairperson position, please speak up. So since everybody jumped up at once to nominate somebody, I'm assuming the commission would like me to continue. I need a motion to nominate me or someone else. Commissioner Johnson?
I would nominate Gordon Rick to continue in the role as chairperson of the planning commission. Although I do have a question, or when does your term expire, Gordon? Because you were on the planning commission when I got here, and we've been on there a while.
I believe it's not this March, but next March.
Perfect.
Ms. Kristi, can you confirm that? Or do you have that available?
I can. Hold on just a moment, and I can look that up. Your term does not expire until March of 2023.
March of 2023. So I still got a little bit.
Perfect. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion. Would anyone care to second that?
I'll second.
And I'm assuming that was Commissioner LeBlanc?
That was Commissioner Applegate.
Commissioner Applegate. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Krist, Ms. Joni, would you please call the vote?
Chairperson Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Hacket, Hacket Larson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainville, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Apodaca, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carried. Congratulations, Chairperson Rick.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we have the position of vice chairperson for 2021. Commissioner Johnson, do you want to talk first?
Sure. I've had the privilege of chairing a couple of meetings in Chairperson Rick's absence and am totally willing to continue in that role if you desire for me to do that. If somebody else wants to take over, much like Chairperson Rick, I'm happy to let somebody else have a shot at it.
Okay. Would anyone else care to throw their hat into the ring?
This is Chairman Rainville. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chairman Johnson as vice president, the vice chair, uh, chairperson.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Brent Johnson, Commissioner Brent Johnson, as our vice chairperson. Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Hacket Larson. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Joni, would you please call the vote?
Chairperson Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacket Larson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainville, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Apodaca, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carried. Congratulations, Vice Chairperson Johnson.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item eight, correspondence comments and ex officio reports. Ms. Kristi?
Thank you. You did receive two case reports in your packet. One was the submitted Fellowship of the Rocky Site Development Plan. This is the religious youth that is located on CNS Road near Legend Oak. And then the second one is a copy of the approved site plan for the Villas at Mesa Ridge, which is located on Cross Creek Avenue to the east of the markets at Mesa Ridge Shopping Center. And this is the active adult senior living facility. And then you also received a housing article from the planning magazine.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Melanie, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Next, Ms. Joni, do you have any questions, comments, concerns, things you'd like to address?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission members, anyone have anything they would like to address?
Commissioner Gordon?
Go ahead. Commissioner Johnson, go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. I'll be brief. I thought we were going to have a little bit of discussion after the presentation by the applicant for the, the apartments. My only comment was going to be that, in my opinion, the approval for the development plan should be contingent upon getting CDOT to allow a lighted intersection because, you know, Mesa Ridge is so busy and people turning left southbound off of Metropolitan have a heck of a time. And I think without a lighted intersection, that would just be really bad. And then my other recommendation would just be that the access on near on point being between the Walgreens and the advanced auto parts, that that be an emergency entrance only for emergency response to the fire department. I just, I can, I just see having some serious traffic headaches as a result of trying to shuttle traffic for nine apartment buildings down that little tiny road, especially given that there's no real defined barrier on the north-south street between, you know, where Walgreens stops and the, and the street starts and then it continues back behind that car wash. I think you're asking for real problems if that becomes a major entrance and exit for that apartment complex. But that'd be all I have.
Okay, and I apologize for not taking more, more time, but I believe, Ms. Kristi, that this was just a, a discussion and recommendation. It was not necessarily, I don't think we're allowed to set conditions during this type of a hearing.
No, I just, I just wanted that to be something that maybe would be considered as part of the, the process.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Commissioner Applegate, I thought you wanted to talk about something? Maybe it was.
Yes.
Go ahead.
It was, yeah, it was Commissioner Applegate, and I had a question. So I heard that city council went ahead and they did a hybrid meeting the other day, where some of the people were in person and the other people were online. Are we, as the planning commission, considering that in the near future?
I will defer to Ms. Martinez.
Okay.
We've looked into doing that. There's some concerns from a staffing level and a capacity space in city council. So if we were to do it as a hybrid, it would be a logistical concern if there were items on the agenda that there was significant numbers of the members of the public who wanted to attend and could not attend because of those capacities. So at this time, we're likely still going to keep the planning commission as a virtual-only meeting at this time.
Do, does staff have a, a trigger point to allow us to hold in-person meetings? I mean, do we have to wait until we get all the way down to zero cases before we do this? Or are we looking at something in between? Because I would, I would personally like to have.
The city's kind of bound with some of the, the recommendations from the health department. So we're kind of going off of those guidance that they provide to the city.
Okay, so once the health department says, recommends that it's okay to do, do a hybrid meeting or a public meeting, then we would look at it? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, we're taking our guidance from the CDC and the health department guidance based on that dial that they've put out in terms of capacity levels and open. So it is everything for the past year has been, it's kind of in flux, and we never really know from week to week what's going to happen.
Okay. Well, the only, the only thing I would say is the sooner we can hold an in-person meeting, the better. I know you've got to follow what county health and, and city administration says, but I'll just voice my preference sooner, sooner rather than later. Anyone else have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, if not, I have nothing to add. Let me find my little clock here. Tell me what time it is. I am showing at, it is 7:02 PM on February 3rd, 2021. I hereby adjourn the meeting. Have a blessed week, everyone.